To order, for the record, we had a non-public at six thirty. It just ended two minutes, about four minutes ago. This now we're gonna enter the regular meeting at the start of seven P M. The time is now seven oh three. Seven oh two. All three Sukkum are present. Town administrators present. And when the secretary is present. And recording for the town and number, we have seven, this got enough. Thank you. And an assist. Okay. I have some minutes, gentlemen.
I'll make the motion to approve the July eleventh, two thousand nineteen minutes amendment. It says, Jim or Joe?
No.
I'm sorry. I'll second both motion.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. I have it on my notes, right?
Where was it said? Oh, July second. Any further discussion on the minutes? They were amended. Okay. Hearing any, no objections, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of July eleventh at seven thirty eight P M.
Second. Hearing any further discussion, gentlemen, on those minutes? I thought they were pretty straightforward. All in favor?
Aye. February third, two. Okay, all pressure, all pressure.
I would sign in my line.
That's okay.
Alright. Retribution. Alright, has anyone from the public comment? Sir?
Um, I'm assuming the...
Your typical support. Okay, can do it. Public com- okay, we're gonna close public comment, bring back to the board some old business. We have, if we call, gentlemen, we're having a discussion on the, I gave you a rule, how we're gonna upgrade the section so the gentleman can build it. We're gonna have a walkabout. The walkabout never really, it was difficult this week and we, because the road agent became, had an injury, so it became difficult. So, Lee, the town administrator, took it upon herself to get things rolling. She took some guidelines that we used for Everett Road, had the road agent review them and make recommendations. Written recommendations, what he would expect for the improvements to be made to the section of the road. He, Lee, has shared that with the, one of the contractors, that the homeowner, the owner of the property, was giving him an estimate. That has happened this week. And the gentleman is working it up. And there's new guidelines that I think we should just be aware that these are the ones recommended by the road agent. It's similar to the guidelines that we use when we approve them for Everett Road. It's modifications, but it's a different role. You should all have a copy. Lee, I want you to talk to it.
So, when the road agent didn't stop by the office this past week, and he did say that he wasn't up for the sidewalk, the owner or the engineer at that time, but he said if there's anything that we have to hand out to him for road standards, he said I should provide them with the detail from the alignment subdivision, which in mirror that information. So where I felt the board had adopted this back in January for the Everett Road extension, I modified the title to say, just basic, class six road improvements, minimum standard. And Jeff was very pleased with that. And then I implemented the requirements from the recorded plan, which is the dates here, twenty-four feet width, three-foot shoulders, twelve-inch bank road, twelve-inch gravel and six-inch crush gravel prior to the issuance of building permits on Ginni Road. So that in the event that the alignments come forward before the permit, the road agent will have something that's similar throughout the entire roadway for improvements.
I know the planning board was invited, but I just wanna share for the record, the planning board also contributed to these guidelines that were...
For the initial one, the Everett Road, yeah.
And I shared that with the chair from the planning board. He was very pleased to hear that we're using the work. And it was a good exercise we did on the Everett Road. And we just modified it just slightly as Lee delineated for Ginni Road. So at this point, we are in a wait-out period. The owner's gonna determine whether he wants to pursue it, developing that property and developing the road to support his property.
So basically, what I'm asking the board tonight to do is, do these minimum standards meet what the board would expect of anyone coming before you to upgrade a class six road?
I think they are, but I don't know if we want to accept them as a hardened copy only because there are some features in some of these roads, like the scenic roads, that these will be adjusted at the planning stage. So I think that this is a good guideline and a minimum standard that we should have as a basis. But then again, I don't think we should accept it as a hard copy only because they're each individual...
Well, each case will be handled, case by case.
Yeah, I think so. But it's nice to have these guidelines to refer to. And I think we ought to put them in with our road information and have them, you know, maybe even attach a land policy.
Okay, so what I would like to do then is, if you're okay with this language, is to forward this to the owners because they were directed from you guys to go to the planning board and ask for a recommendation. So that being said, sharing this with the planning board to say, this is what you have developed.
As a starting...
This is the, what we provided the engineer to review so that he could get a cost to the estimate to the owners. And if they choose to go forward with that project, then we're expecting them to be at the hole to this and then work with the road agent through the whole process.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
And then, you know, they'll have to work with the stone walls and the cutting of the trees with the scenic road issues and all that, regardless of... The only thing here is I wanna, I think we may need to do some correcting in the word. On paragraph three,
Yeah.
In the event there is a lot developed along a class six roadway, there must be a minimum improvements along the frontage of the lot. It's not just the frontage of the lot, a frontage of the road from a class five road.
Okay, so...
Remember how that was worded?
Yeah.
It's on the, I, you have the Everett Road one, but it, okay.
Was a little different.
Well, the Everett Road one is a little different only because that road was the entire length, Lee.
Right.
But I think we need to go back to that wording. Remember, remember on our policies that were in place?
It here, here it says, at, um, the roadway must be constructed to reach said lot or at, as a minimum along the full frontage of the lot. That's what it said on the Everett Road. So you're saying from...
Everett Road was the entire frontage of the lot where they wanted to continue the roadway.
Okay, I see what you're saying, sorry.
You need to go back to the town policy where it says that you'll need to upgrade it from a class five road to the lot. So where the class five ends...
Oh, that's a very good point.
Okay. The class five, the class five, meaning the entire road and or...
Right, but the thing is, but remember the part of the class six is already approved.
So insert...
Right, that's right.
From the class five.
It's not just their frontage, they do have another lot in between there.
Okay, sorry. Improvements along the frontage of the lot from the class five?
No, go back to our town road policy there and write it from that, right from the beginning.
Please, I don't know, do you have, we have a policy on that?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Alright, so paragraph three's gonna be modified.
Yeah, modify paragraph three, cut it to copy where it says to start from the class five portion of the road to the frontage of the lot with the turnaround included. So if we can modify paragraph three out here at our next meeting, then we can send it to the board. Or if you want, we can approve it.
The only thing is, let's take a minute, we got, we got time. Let's just get the wording down here, right?
Then we'll get our town policy soon.
Yeah.
And that would be in the hardwoods chart?
No, our town policy for the select, but I already have a policy for class six road development.
That would be Everett Road one?
No.
No, it's actually written in the...
Oh, oh, you're talking about that signing waiver thing that's in there?
It's not the waiver thing, but it's in that package.
I'd rather just do it right, get the moment doing it now.
Sure. You guys know what I'm talking about, right?
I know.
Because here, we're talking about just the frontage, and I don't want people to get confused that they only have to develop their own frontage.
Right, no, it's, it's...
Has to go from where the class five road ends to the Y and then include a turnaround.
Right, now, but this case will be from the driveway, the turnaround that's developed to his, the neutral turnaround.
No, it will go from the end of the class five portion of the road.
Yes, but the thing is, what I'm saying is, if you look at the...
I'm telling you, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
We can't reference a driveway.
No, no.
We need to reference the end of the class five.
But the fact that it's already developed is in its favor.
Yeah. Minimum.
Minimum, yeah, albeit minimum. But we've been maintaining it for...
Right, I just wanna, I kept reading the frontage, and I said it has nothing to do with the frontages.
It's, right, just driveway to the, to the class five road.
On that particular lot, all of the lots being developed toward the rest of them.
Right, if the last one was developed, he'd have to develop the entire road. Or the middle one, he'd have to develop the first part of the road. So the first guy might get off, feeling good. Okay, let's take a moment, have a sign for a second. Just to let you know, we have an email from the town, he's gonna make sure that Sukkum are ready, it's a...
Yeah, did.
Concerned citizen. In reference to our solar panels.
Solar panels.
Yeah. We're just, in inter, we're reading a few town inbox items, okay? Um, just, weather permitting, July twenty-ninth, this August second, they're gonna be coming out and doing the solar installation. Mr. La Boy is, uh, for David Everett. Okay, I'm just going on for now. We've got a letter from the General Court, this is July nineteenth, another letter, this is Mr.... Concerning the budget, it was from the opposition to the governor. The governor sent us this letter, now we have the oppositions taking different points of view. And we're stuck in the middle, not receiving any of it yet.
I mean, they just want to know why.
Yeah, so it explains the position of the opposing, the governor's position. So it's a dissenting opinion, read at your leisure. Just to let you know, at the transfer station, the damage to the compactors have been fixed. Woody did an admirable job of keeping it open by getting some extra equipment. He's returned the equipment, it's pretty much back to normal. We hired someone this week, another employee, along with an interim, I still believe we hired her. And we have one more employee that volunteered. If you coordinate with Lee, Lee is trying to, I still want to meet with a Sukkum. The volunteer to meet with one Sukkum, the town administrator, and probably this company.
Sure.
Okay, so page three, this is the policy, we'll be writing, go through this.
Direction of buildings, we... Board's Sukkum policy, proceed to direct to building a class six highway, is this? There we go. Original said, the board will not grant an application for permit to erect a building on class six highway unless it is processed to cross driveway access. So a class six highway is three hundred feet or less from a class five highway. Overlooked, great application, overlooked, no class six application.
Okay, and then was, in the event there's a lot developed along, along, along a class six highway, there must be a minimum improvements along the front, along improvements to the, I would say along the frontage, just saying to the proposed driveway, correct? I was gonna strike that.
Let me read this next paragraph, then we can pull from what we want. The board will not grant an application for a permit to erect any building on a class six highway unless the applicant agrees to upgrade thereafter, maintain the class six highway at his or her own expense, at his or her own expense, to establish the planning board road designs and planning standards specifications. Not including ash wall cover from the end of the nearest class five highway or better highway up to and including the entire length of any class six highway frontage on the lot. So it's that last line we want.
Thing is, we gotta have them develop the entire road along this lot, or just to a proposed driveway.
But it starts from the class five, nears class five, which is...
This says the entire length of any class six highway frontage on the lot.
So it is entire frontage.
I thought you guys had said that it would be at least to the turnaround...
Is of his driveway.
Designated on, on the driveway or near the driveway.
In the event there's a lot development along the classics road, there must be a minimum improvements on the frontage of the lot to the proposed driveway. How about improvements, just to say, get rid of the long frontage of the lot, just say to the, improvements to the, on the lot to the, to the proposed driveway. Turnaround, they said either end of the driveway, end of the frontage, or if set, left, wrong. Placement of any turnaround will be determined by the road agent. I would say, strike and list the frontage here, it's gonna be...
You have to straight the frontage, but you have to add any other lineage. From the class five road.
Right, from the class five road. In the event there's a lot, along the class, must be a minimum improvements to the proposed road. From, what was the words, from the, from the, uh, class five or better highway?
From the end of the nearest, from the end of the nearest, nearest class five or better highway up to and including the entire length of any class six highway frontage on the lot.
So that last part was, and including frontage?
And including the entire length of any class six highway frontage on the lot.
To the, on the frontage of the road.
Now, Lee, what's, now, what's the last sentence?
That turnaround will be placed either at the end of the driveway or at the end of the frontage of said lot, if developed, placement in size of any turnaround will be determined by the road agent. I think that's fine.
A turnaround will either be placed at the end of the driveway...
Or at the end of the frontage of said developed lot, which is correct.
Yeah.
And or placement in size of the determined road agent.
So, yeah. Because they have a lot of frontage on their...
And then the other paragraph I'd like to add is the very next paragraph, which talks about their release, though. Although if they're upgraded, they shouldn't have to sign a release.
No.
So we're making a...
Right. I haven't, my, wait, pen mark, pencil mark, two.
I'm gonna use, I'm gonna use the sentence, I'm gonna look at that policy there.
Yeah, I have it basically written here. Are you in consensus with this?
Are you saying that they have to upgrade the class six all the way through the frontage, entire frontage of their property?
What we had done before, like, say their frontage is five hundred feet, and the minimum standard on that road is three hundred feet, it's that standard, I think.
Oh, because that's a medium density, it's two hundred fifty, two fifty.
So I would say it'd be two fifty now, because they're in medium density over there.
Yeah, yeah.
So you only require for three acres and two fifty foot frontage in medium density.
Correct, correct.
So that's what I'm saying. So it would follow the densities we already have in the town, depending on where the road is in the town.
Do you want to word it so that it's clear in that description? Because, um...
Will we just read what it said one more time here?
It's gonna be, now, we asked them to develop the, along the entire length of the lot? That's the question.
Yeah, because I think they have like a couple thousand feet of frontage.
Right, but they would only have to go from the start of their lot, two hundred fifty feet in.
Why not, I think, I think we may have misled them because we may have said just to enjoy their proposed driveway.
Right, and they said that they were approximately, what, a hundred and seventy-three, a hundred and seventy-five feet to the access that they wanted to enter in on, isn't that...
Whatever we do, we have to make sure we're gonna do it everywhere. The only way I know to do it, have it stay the same everywhere, is the frontage requirements we already have in the different zoning districts in the town.
But I'm looking at it from a practical standpoint.
You remember, we made them do the frontage, the entire frontage on each lot as they did the lots.
Right.
The turnaround was at the end of those, so we did it similar already on Everett Road. With each lot, we made them do right to the edge of the next lot.
Right. The turnaround will be either at the placement end of the roadway or at the end of the frontage line of said staggered. At the end of the frontage of said, yeah.
So by going by the density, whether it's low, medium...
But their, their lot is actually a thousand feet, so...
Did you read this, you have a copy of that?
Yeah, we do, we have written it.
It says here, the, okay, in the event lot development is staggered, the road must be constructed to each, to reach said lot or as a minimum along the full frontage of the lot. So it's actually giving you the driveway option or the whole frontage. If you put the driveway right at the first fifty feet...
And I think, Dave, it's not gonna be, if we have been doing it on the entire frontage of the lot, it's not...
Where is we reading on that page?
Right, that one, this one, this one.
Everett Road one, you have attached to your packet.
What paragraph are you reading?
Paragraph three, yeah.
A turnaround will either be placed at the end of the driveway or at the end of the frontage.
Now, go up one sentence on the Everett Road one. In the event lot development is staggered.
Where are we reading on?
In the event, yeah, in the Everett Road.
I didn't put it in that one, I didn't put it in the modified one, but...
In the event the lot development is staggered, the roadway must be constructed to reach said lot or as a minimum on the frontage of the lot.
That's why by not putting it in that minimum standard...
And the issue is, Dave, I think, is if they have a thousand, let's say a thousand feet, and the thing is, there's no, no one beyond that, beyond that road, why would we have to develop it beyond a thousand feet? This next person involved would be responsible for that.
I think we should make them do the minimum standards requirement in the zone that they're in.
Well, I think that's...
It makes sense, every other time you have a class five road line. Otherwise, I'm gonna tell you this right now, otherwise, you have a lot out there on a class six road. They've only upgraded fifty feet to class five.
Right.
They don't meet their minimum standards to build on that one, yeah, because you have two hundred and fifty feet upgraded to class five.
No, technically, you can have one foot on a class five and get a building permit.
If it's a pre-existing lot on a class five road. But we're looking to develop a class six road to a class five road. So we need to make sure we follow those frontage requirements.
Notice, it's gonna follow the frontage requirement.
It's that way there, when you go to planning, they say, okay, we have a building permit here, they have two hundred and fifty feet upgrade on this particular lot, three hundred on low density, and, what's the end of the town, what's the density?
Village.
Village district.
So how do we word that into here? So the thing is, uh, I think it's already worded in here, but if we know what this paragraph is. It says the entire length of the, of the, no, of the, how do we, the end of the lot. No, that's the entire length, it's, because that's, that's wrong.
So if we go to our zoning board, this, and look at the...
Is it the subdivision regulations that says it? I don't take a sense of it in the zoning.
It is in the zoning.
No, under a lot size. Lot sizes.
Can I grab it?
Yep.
Grab it, give it time at this point, get it right. Then, otherwise, they're only upgrading, you know, fifty feet, and it's not a buildable lot at that point. Has to be built to the frontage of the different districts.
Agreed.
So if we follow that zoning districts, that way it will be... So we probably should correct that what they wanted.
Well, they're gonna get a copy of this, it'll be delayed quite well anyway. And this will be the minimum standards, their, it takes their weight of this.
The contractor, I think, did get a copy of this, yeah, but we're looking to revise copy.
Right. So if this is a median density, it'd be two hundred and fifty feet.
Right, from the edge of their property that started.
So they can place a driveway anywhere they want.
The turnaround.
Yeah, but the only thing is, will a town, let's say they put their, their turnaround in, driveway a hundred fifty, a hundred feet in. They're gonna develop more property behind there, for what reason? The town's not gonna maintain it. But I collect that, wow, but if they're gonna go up to the turnaround, placement of the turnaround.
They have to have an upgrade on the class five road to build on that lot.
To build on it, but then the town doesn't maintain it, then it goes to the dirts.
It doesn't matter if the next person coming down the road wants to go further than they just extend from where those people started.
Oh, I understand, understood.
You know, Mike Guy's property line, I think, is right where his driveway is, so it's kind of coincidental on that, on that first lot.
Just worked out that way.
Yeah, worked out that way, that's the end of his lot. Then there's another lot. And then they were talking about going a hundred and twenty-five feet into their property because there's a break in the fireway. So the other lot was like one seventy-five, and they were gonna go one twenty-five more because there was a break. In fact, they said they thought it was one twenty-five, and it was actually a hundred and seventy-five feet within the break in the fireway. Where they wanted to put their driveway.
Now, Mike just made a comment about if we ask them to upgrade, we create a turnaround that's right in the driveway, and we stop maintaining this area that they have developed and brought up to class five, we're obligated to continue that additional a hundred feet, if that's what it is. We are obligated to go further down.
The turnaround should be placed at the end of it. Not at the driveway.
No, that's the whole placement, that's who we're talking about. If you're gonna do placement of the turnaround, placement at the end of the driveway or class five portion they approve. Otherwise, they're wasting, we're wasting their money.
Right, right.
And I don't, I don't really believe that the turnaround should be in the driveway anyway because when you're turning around as a town turnaround in somebody's driveway, we know what kind of problems those create, okay?
I have my owner, I have my estate.
So I don't agree on the turnaround there. We're gonna start from scratch, we should have the turnaround is in the right spot, I should think, at the end of the frontage. So let me go to the zoning here, just...
Can I get that policy so I can start writing some notes while I'm looking at that? Because I want to make sure that...
No, they get the zoning frontages in here.
Yeah, I know.
We want, we want to go by those, the zoning frontages.
Low density, three hundred.
Three hundred.
Medium, two fifty, village district, two hundred.
So placement of the... The placement of the turnaround, the thing is, there's gonna be some physical latitude, he should have some latitude to place it towards the end of the development.
Agreed.
At the end, the nearest class five.
So the turnaround will either be placed at the end of the roadway, we should put at the end of the class, at the end of the upgraded class five highway. Or at the end of frontage of the said road.
The end of the existing class five.
No, no.
No, only the...
It's weird, in other words, let's say they go...
At the end of the upgraded class five.
Up the front.
Oh, okay.
Or is determined, is best determined, it may be fifty feet off, if you were taking, he's gonna have some latitude here.
Okay, I've got two.
We have that in there.
Yeah, and that latitude is four at the end of the frontage of said lot, if it develops as staggered.
That's, that's the, that's the effort, which you use, we use that more.
Okay, you might want to straighten the driveway.
Yep. Agreed.
And it also helps, there's this placement of the turnaround, it'll be determined by the road agent.
Right.
So we, we have to figure out how to put the, um, the density districts in there as far as frontage being.
To meet the, the frontage of...
The class five roadway will be upgraded to the minimum density requirements in the area.
Middle of density requirements. Requirements.
To...
Of the districts, of the district the property is located.
In which property is located?
Yeah. The property, district. At some point in time, it's changed. District, yes. The densities. Yeah, and that way, we'll refer to that, and the rating is the same, so...
Alright, so, starting paragraph three.
Three.
In the event there's a lot developed along the class six roadway, there must be, at a minimum, improvements...
From the end of the nearest class five highway up and include...
The nearest...
Class five or better highway. Up to, including the entire length of any class six highway frontage to the Y.
I have to check this out.
Okay.
Do you want to, do you want to go, Lee? I don't know, will you type it right now?
I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try, because...
Do you want me to come back and we'll do a review of it?
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna continue the mailbox.
Okay.
I think we got it done.
Just let me read this one. Here's a, here's the word we're gonna use, in the zoning district in which the parcel for development is located, that's the word we're gonna use right there.
Class five will be upgraded to the minimum density requirements in the dis, uh, of the district in which the property is located, that's, we have a reason to say the same thing.
In the zoning district in which the parcel for development is located.
In which the.
Parcel.
Parcel, okay. Parcel.
Where the development is located.
It's not development, though, it's, it's, it's a, it's a.
Development. In which the parcel for development is located.
Okay, so that's the, class five will be upgraded to the minimum density requirements, zoning district in which the parcel for development is located.
Yep, perfect. I hope she has all that, but we'll keep this open in case, no, okay.
Sorry, to the mailbox, gentlemen.
See how that one looks, huh?
Really, really, do we have time to really, uh, get into the.
We have open seats, if you guys.
Okay, I'll sign that, Dave, uh, we got the update from the town, uh, from the, uh, planning, and, uh, zoning department, from the building inspectors, it's, uh, it's an FYI, no action needed. Read that. Uh, we have a decision from the, uh, planning board, notice of decision, essentially the, uh, there'll be a lot line adjustment. Obviously, for the meat is straightforward, there's no, it was pretty straightforward, it was. Consulting, uh, building, building, uh, structure of our properties. For one night.
What was this, a lot line adjustment?
Otherwise. We have something about bear problems going on in the states, with, uh, fishing, uh, uh, wild, uh, wildlife in San Antonio, wants to put information on the website concerning bears, I have no problem with that. Do you have any problem with that?
No.
Um, the, the, the Hampshire Fisheries, Fish and Game.
Bears and chickens.
Bird fetus too, yeah, not happy with bird fetus, I guess.
They just left some eggs, they wouldn't eat the chickens.
There was a. Got one quote for the, uh, I think we need more quotes for the, uh, walls, Woody, we're starting to get quotes in for, uh, some work down on the walls and the gate fencing on the, uh, transportation.
We know what we didn't understand about African lakers, now, why the, why are the fences six feet high on that wall? We talked about a three-foot high fence.
Probably basically to keep little kids from falling into it.
Yeah, because the, the concrete's already up.
Right.
You know, a couple of feet, so if you did a three-foot on top, you know, if you look at the six-foot on there, it's gonna look like a jail in front of that fence. Know what I mean, Robert?
Yeah.
It'd look ugly, I think, if there's six-foot stock gate fence up there, or wire fencing.
I think we should, uh, when we sit down with Woody, can we review that, Bob, so we understand?
Yeah, I think we, and the other thing too is, we may take additional quotes, cause it's coming up early. Cause you know, we, we talked about that a year or so, when we talked about like a three-foot fence on top of the, uh, concrete that was there, rail so that people couldn't fall in the dumpsters.
Right.
And he has the gates there to hold it up to allow people to put stuff in.
I know the prices were high enough, where additional quotes are needed, I agree with Bob, so I don't wanna talk about the money now, but we can add more quotes.
Yeah, and I think you guys are right, let me sign that one, cause I've written that in the mail-in letter. I just wanna make sure whoever meets with me discusses how to do it, cause I think a six-foot fence on top of the roof.
Will you take that, Bob?
I'll take that as well.
Woody, have you been with Woody for the, uh?
Oh, okay, yeah, well, it's supposed to mean with the volunteer.
Volunteer.
I'm gonna bring that up.
That's what I was thinking. How we went, went out for two weeks. Um, we have a Boston Kane, I guess, a name for a. That was analysis.
There is a problem with that.
Okay.
Every time you give it to someone, they die. It's one of the. I'm not taking that.
I don't even know what this one's about, this is about the USDA, I have not, I, information grams. Oh, yeah, I, or how would you put a vote, something about farms, I read this online.
Wow, we have a couple here, I have this one. Don't do that, do we want to initial it, or?
Yeah, just initial it. I think that's a town meeting, and we don't, we don't wait, do we wait for town meeting, or?
No, I think we, uh, we do it before that, but we, uh, highlighted that town meeting.
Yeah, we can do it, it's a segment.
You don't want to start yet?
Thank you. Okay, so. And something from the, uh, Department of Agriculture. Okay. We need to schedule that, I'll, just tell the, we need to schedule that, that could happen. All right, we, we, we can vote in the Farm Service Agency County Collect, Committee Elections. That means that, if we have enough agriculture here, with this, it would be of interest to anybody? I'm gonna, I wanna read that for, I don't have time to read it tonight, I like to just defer any action on that one. Bob, did you have?
What do they wanna do with this?
Suppose we can vote on county elections.
This is for farm, for farm. Why don't we defer it, I'm good to read it.
Yeah. Open that defer pile. I forget a copy, think of the area, I think it's just.
We're gonna find tomorrow, we should know around.
Right. I just, it just, it was tough to understand what they were trying to say. I just, all right, uh, we're almost done.
I guess we're.
All right. All right, while we're waiting for that, I'm gonna open up the public comment, anything from the public. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, for long, uh, going back to your fences or the concrete.
Yes.
If you have a swimming pool, you don't have to worry about a pole for that.
We're, we're doing, we're essentially questioning the same thing, we think six foot is too high, is it already put up the ground?
You can swim in pools in the dumpster, you can put, you can put in.
Right.
Yeah, and the concrete's already up.
Five foot.
Six foot and a half off the ground, so we may talk about a three-foot fence, you can still see over.
Bob's gonna talk to, uh, specification, so, so noted, and we agree with you.
Bob, uh, we lost, we lost on.
Done anything? No, okay, I'll bring it back from the, the public session, and, uh, still waiting on that. All right, gentlemen, uh, one thing that I wanna talk about is, uh, do we need to do a review of, uh, what is it, uh, work session? I was thinking seven, maybe the first two weeks of August, we could have, have.
Any policy, I think it was one that we had. You know, we do that, yeah, till the first two months of August, you know, and come out.
Yeah, okay, so, well, we schedule the, between the eighteenth and the twenty-fourth, possibly? I think it's.
I only remember one idea.
Well, we wanted to talk about the, uh, one thing I wanted to talk about, like, delayed this year was the, um, change in the health care plan of enrollment for, where we have everyone grandkids. Some people grandfather, a hundred percent coverage, and some people paying less, paying more into it than others, we wanted to make it a uniform across the board. That was one of the things, policy change we wanted to make.
So there's no benefit to being there longer?
No, in fact, what, I'm right, there's no boys.
There's no benefit.
Go ahead.
Well, they, they received that, um, that longevity package.
I think I don't know X of that.
You know, and, you know, when, you know, if, just, uh, just something to think about, just remember, the person making the least money is investing in their health insurance, the person making the most money pays nothing. And you have longevity for them, they've already completed all their step increases, sorry, the max one, so it's just something to think about. Cause every industry you're looking at now, is everybody investing in their health insurance.
And I think, that's something we talked, talked about last year, we, we made one change last year by adding deductibles.
That isn't the one I thought about, we had one more.
Yeah.
Turn that, but we, we put in the local, and this is the one we have.
We'll, we'll research and we'll get back to it, but things, I don't think we have many, but we, maybe one half in the session.
Yes.
An hour or two.
You wanna just do a tentative on the twenty-first?
Okay, I don't, what's, what time would you give you for a work?
Two AM, maybe?
Twenty-first?
Two to three, something like that.
Two to three PM. And that is open to the public, for the record, it's, uh, it's basically, we have a work session where we review the, uh, town policy manual. We make changes, uh, as appropriate, we would be, uh, we discuss it, and then we, uh, take input, if anyone has any input, we can go from there. Okay, Dave, do you have anything?
You have a whole bunch of stuff.
Okay.
I think I'm good with this.
We still have, uh, I know the library trusts us with one, who is very good at that.
Well, I went to a few meetings this week, I went, uh, picking out, uh, town forest meeting.
Hey, you see a check?
Fred was there, and, uh, we reviewed a bunch of stuff on that property in the meeting, about the maintenance of the farm fields, and also we reviewed the spraying of the iron foundation in the farm field.
Uh huh.
At that meeting, I also wanted to thank the Dunn family for their donation, and, uh, she's here, so on behalf of the select, we'd like to thank you as well, I'm not sure if you saw the meeting, but it's where we did. So that'll get that property, uh, hopefully back so we can see the foundation.
We have to have the date sprayed.
Okay, please. Okay, great.
July.
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, so we discussed those issues, and the fact that they're gonna have a, uh, it is the thirtieth year of the, uh, town forest, right, Fred?
Yeah.
And so they're gonna have a booth at Old Home Day, and show some of the original films and pictures and maps, and, uh, they're also gonna have a walk. Do you remember the date of the walk, Fred?
It was, it's a meeting in two.
Okay, so they're gonna have a, uh, a walk in the forest after, and then be determined at the, uh, Old Home Day. So that pretty much takes care of that meeting, and then, uh, lastly, I went to the, uh, Dungard Town Hall Restoration Meeting. And, uh, it's summer month, so there was just four of us, um, but we had the town hall open from six thirty until the meeting started at seven oh eight, so we could go upstairs and downstairs and check out the building and all the ingresses and egresses, and to try and get some better ideas on where those additions would fit on the property. They're in the process of contacting the prior architect, trying to get some new drawings done out of their budget to try and get that process started. We reviewed some of the drawings that were already done by John Stevens, and, um, they're also gonna be open and on display on Old Home Day, and they're either gonna have a tent right outside the doors, or maybe in the entryway there, they're the best of view only, and they asked that I would bring to the boards that could, they could have permission to have the best of view open only, not the bathrooms, they're gonna block them off, and so they could take potential people up and walk them around just to show them what their ideas and thoughts are there. I told them this, like, and I didn't have a problem, but we've run it by you guys.
I don't have a problem.
No, I mean.
Especially for small groups, okay, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I'm taking just a few people at a time, they're going up, and they're gonna have somebody stay in the best of view area, and they're gonna have one person.
So I don't want, no one watching the library.
Nope, library will be locked, and they're gonna actually pull that case in front of the bathrooms, it'll be a basic bathroom. So Dean, could you email Margaret, let her know that her board has consensus that they can use that?
For them, like they have in the past?
Yep.
Okay. And John Stevens wanted to be CC'd on, and, and they can, they're gonna have basically two small floors up the upstairs.
Okay.
That's fine, and the light is on, usually it's daylight.
Yep.
It's nighttime, yeah.
So I gave them kind of an update on what we were working on, talking about the sprinkler system and or the lighting, and, uh, they started talking about outlets and whatnot, and I told them that we were concerned, although it probably lighting that floor up, and the additional hardware would be part of their scope after the fact, trying to stay within our original protocol.
Yep.
And I told them, um, some of our discussions for next year's maintenance fund was maybe to, uh, work on contacting somebody to fix the steps in the front of that building that are crumbling as part of our maintenance budget, and, um, Margaret had suggested, because it's a structural thing, and there is becoming some water down in our basement, she may put the effort into trying to do an L chip grant on those steps to maybe help us with some of the cost. So she said those come in the spring, and she would put the effort into doing that, she did already try L chip grants for the rest of the building, but because they weren't structural issues, there were no grants for us, like other town halls have done renovations that have had structural issues, and L chip, um, help fund a lot.
Yeah, so when we, rent steps, uh, we're paying a point out, but we did them, trip hazards and all that kind of stuff.
Right, and if you look at them, there's the chunks that are chipping on the front, and for some reason, they're setting them back, like, right on the edge, so we know where they go. They're actually causing more trip hazards there, so.
Okay, so, that's a day.
So that's about all for that meeting.
Okay, you ready?
Yep.
Bob?
I hear you. An ongoing person, has Mr. Mortowski come and taken a look at the road yet?
He's not, I saw them pull in the parking lot this week, but it was for like five seconds and then they left, but he did say he's supposed to give me advance notice so that I could get in the picture of Dave, or one of those luckily.
He didn't respond back yet?
Yeah, he didn't, yeah, he actually picked up the phone and said, um, he wasn't sure.
It's a busy time of year.
Yeah, he wasn't sure what the tone was in the email when I was questioning him, so he picked up the phone.
It would be nice if he could get it done before Old Home Day, which is coming in seventeen, the wind kind of, uh, you know, there's a suspect that two tiles have either fallen from the wind or from the sky, and so rather than someone becoming hurt. You know, and again, I understand, they're advertising, they're all to give estimates, but at the same time, my point is, we gotta satisfy the client that you have also. So I guess I'll be a stickler there.
All right. Any word on the sign for, um, just, just be on the sign for one of our rooms?
Um, those were on order, they typically come in and then, um, work it into their weekly schedule, but Jeff did confirm that they had it ordered.
Okay, so, okay, any other statement, Bob?
No, I'm all set.
Lean, uh, we're not deferring your input before, we're, we're heading back to the, uh.
I had an upgrade done to the laptop, and for some reason, it's an unlicensed Microsoft, so I can't change what I did in the other office, um, until I bring the flash drive back over there, but I, I think I have, in the event that there is a lot developed along the class six road, there must be at a minimum improvements from the nearest class five or better highway up to and including the entire frontage length of the improved lot.
Including the entire length of, uh, the thing is, we're not gonna say, we're not gonna strike that, it's basically, the lot's four thousand square, a thousand's feet in total, we're gonna say, it's basically, it's gonna be, uh, uh, somehow, we have to incorporate that with the class five operation, it's gonna be, the minimum density requirements of the zoning district in which.
Minimum density.
Density requirements of the zoning district in which the parcel is being located.
This, it's, it's more, I'm, I'm telling the sentence after you, uh.
Okay.
This should end that.
In the zoning district in which the parcel.
For development is located.
Okay, that's perfect, okay.
That was a minimum, uh, we're not gonna put the full entire.
Right.
Minimum, okay.
Instead of the entire frontage, we wanna say the minimum, so that way. And then.
Okay, so again, it's at a minimum, improvements from the nearest class five or better highway up to and including frontage required in the zoning district, et cetera.
Yeah, yes, it definitely sounds, yeah, cause it's worried real well.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I need, you want to do these corrections?
Uh, that's good enough. Okay. I think I'm good.
Good work.
Yeah.
Can you sign or add something?
Not for, not on tape.
You got people, yeah.
Yeah.
They gotta be entertained, they can't just.
I just like to, for the record, Chief of Police is out of town this week. He took a sudden leave of absence, his dad is to return for the worst health-wise, and so he's, went to Massachusetts to go visit his dad. And so the acting chief is a sergeant Romanarch, and probably be out for a week or two at such a time as he can determine what's happening with his dad. Looks like maybe it may be a hospice situation, or even that.
Okay.
He came here courtesy of phone call this week, and made sure they were strained before he went down, as far as getting Sergeant Romanarch on the road. How's Jeff doing? I don't know, well, the thing is, when he was on the medications, he was gonna hear happiest clam. This is almost a couple days afterwards, but he had a few days, he was down, but things have, he's doing well, he's up and above more than. People saw him, Lean said he was looking really well. Jeff, just for the record, our road agent had a accident on his property, he fell from a rafter and hurt himself. And he's in a recovery mode, so he was, last week was all recovery mode, and he's back to work, but I'd say limited duty at this point. Go ahead.
He's told to his son that one person was falling, the medical car accident was hard as all. He says he's still fine, but he said that exact same words the day he fell so.
Exactly.
I guess Coleman and Jackson's, he's doing good.
I think the gentleman's very lucky, and I'm glad he's still fine. So again, so we're gonna wait just a couple, four minutes, but I don't think we can talk this up tonight. It'd be nice, but we're, right, I just wanna make sure. Because I don't want to delay this, the potential that someone not being able to develop this property, or just messing around with the project. Okay, we're anxious.
All right.
In the event there is a lot developed along a Class 6 roadway, there must be at a minimum improvements from the nearest Class 5 or Better Highway up to and including the frontage required in the zoning district in which the parcel for development is located. A turnaround will either be placed at the end of the driveway or at the end of the frontage of said lot, frontage of said lot if developed. Placement and size of any turnaround to be determined by the road agent. Got that last statement? Because driveways may not be the best spot that road agent can determine, I think that's good enough.
I think I just bought it, I think that's a significant improvement.
Yeah, yeah. And it's something we can use and modify depending on a lot that comes around.
Right, and that's why I didn't want to accept it as a policy, but I would like it attached to that policy that you already have for your Class 6 roads.
What I can do then is if you guys approve the language, then this one here has a signature line, I can bring it back before the board next week just to sign it, so that becomes a formal.
Can we give you a verbal page to get it to the contractor so we can give him? So again, minimum standards gonna go, because I don't want to delay that.
Do you have a cell number for November?
No, I got it.
You know, the only thing that kinda bothers me is the driveway part. You know, Jeff could determine that, it's just that we end up going down a road that we bend down.
Should we keep that driveway part right out, you think, Bob?
I would rather keep it out of there.
Just put turnaround to be determined by the road agent, take the driveway portion out, okay?
All right, so.
That way we.
Read us that last sentence.
All right, it's right now, it says, a turnaround will be either placed at the end of the driveway or at the end of the frontage of said lot if developed. I can scratch the whole sentence?
No, a turnaround will be, will be placed along the developed, the improved portion.
Turnaround will be placed.
Along the improved portion.
Along the improved.
With determining, with the exact determination being determined by the road agent.
Well, then the next sentence says, placement and size of any turnaround to be determined by the road agent. I scratched that sentence before.
Yeah, I think I just moved that one up by Jeff, so that way.
Placement. So I scratched that, turnaround will be, will either be at the end of the driveway or the end of the frontage.
No, 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 scratch that. Scratch that.
And just put placement and size of any turnaround to be determined by the road agent. Because there may be ledge or wetlands, or all kinds of other things that would.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Road agent, endorse the Act Book?
No, road agent.
You go as a road agent.
Because he's gonna have to use it in with the highway.
Okay, but you're right, if we put driveway in, then they're gonna say, you said driveway.
Yeah.
So then they're gonna just want to wind up your driveway. So you read that one sentence back then.
Okay, so.
My turnaround will be.
In the event there is a lot developed along the Class 6 road, there must be at a minimum improvements from the nearest Class 5 or Better Highway up to and including the frontage required in the zoning district in which the parcel development is located. Placement and size of the turnaround to be determined by the road agent.
Placement of any, any proposed turnaround, that thought sentence is hanging there.
Right, so it's.
Good.
Placement and size of any turnaround to be determined by the road agent.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
It's simple.
Of the turnaround, not any. Of the turnaround, because it's gotta be a turnaround.
Okay, yep, of the turnaround.
Because it's not just one road, Brian Lord, on Prowlatory Pond Road, the turnaround was right through his yacht, and so when we went down to the fish, and Felicity would get upset, they're turning around on the property, so that takes that out of the.
Of the turnaround, okay, yep, it works.
Okay, good. Well, we have consensus that we can give, we can phone with this to the.
Okay. So I'll tell the croakers that you received a draft, and you guys reviewed it and amended it slightly, and this is what is the file.
And make sure John knows what district they're in, telling them they're in the median district, which is 250. From the starting, they were already talking about either doing 125 or 175 into their property anyway, because that's where the break was.
Right, right.
So 250 is not much further, it's enough to do the turnaround.
Right, and he did, when he came back to get the draft, and I had stayed the draft, he said that there really was a lot to do there, so I think he could probably work with what's there and upgrade it substantially, and not at a big expense for the owner, so I don't know for sure.
Lean, while you're up, remember one, you didn't invite back to you, but I'm gonna open up to you if you have anything special to say.
Not today.
We won't, see?
This week.
I think we're good.
Make a motion to adjourn at 8 o'clock.
Where's all the money?
How second?
3 o'clock.
Where'd you get your account before Old Home Day? This is coming in 17, the wind cause, you know, there's a suspect that two tiles have either fallen from the roof or from the sky, and so rather than someone becoming hurt. You know, and again, I understand they're advertising, they're all to give estimates, but at the same time, my point is, we gotta satisfy the client that you have also. So I guess I'll be a stickler there.
Any word on the sign for, just be on the sign for one of our rooms?
Those were on order, they typically come in and then work it into their weekly schedule, but Jeff did confirm that he had it ordered.
Okay, so, okay. Any other statement, Bob?
No, I'm all set.
Lean, we're not defer to your input before, we're gonna be like, back to the.
I had an upgrade done to the laptop, and for some reason, it's an unlicensed Microsoft, so I can't change what I did in the other office until I bring the flash drive back over there. But I think I have, in the event that there is a lot developed along the Class 6 road, there must be at a minimum improvements from the nearest Class 5 or Better Highway up to and including the entire frontage length of the improved lot.
Doing the entire length of, the thing is, we're not gonna say, we're not gonna strike that, it's basically the lot's over 1,000 square, 1,000 feet in total. We're gonna say, basically, it's gonna be, somehow, we have to incorporate that for the Class 5 operation, it's gonna be meet the minimum density requirements of the zoning district in which the parcel.
Density.
Density requirements of the zoning district in which the parcel being located.
Just, can you send some more? It's on the sentence after you.
Okay.
This should end that.
In the zoning district in which the parcel.
For development is located.
Okay, that's perfect.
That was a minimum amount, we're not gonna put the full entire.
Minimum, okay.
Instead of the entire frontage, we wanna say the minimum, so that way. And then we.
Okay, so again, it's at a minimum, improvements from the nearest Class 5 or Better Highway up to and including frontage required in the zoning district, et cetera.
Yes, in that whole sense, yeah, because it's worded real well.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, and we.
Do you want to add any corrections?
Uh, that's the.
I think I'm good.
You good?
Yeah.
Can you sign or add something?
Not for, not on tape.
You got people, yeah. They gotta be entertained, they can't just.
I just like to, for the record, Chief of Police is out of town this week. He took a sudden leave of absence, his dad is to return for the worst health-wise, and so he's, went to Massachusetts to go visit his dad. And so the acting chief is a sergeant Romanarch, and probably be out for a week or two at such a time as he can determine what's happening with his dad. Looks like maybe it may be a hospice situation, or even that.
Okay.
He came here courtesy of phone call this week, and made sure they were strained before he went down, as far as getting Sergeant Romanarch on the road. How's Jeff doing? I don't know, well, the thing is, when he was on the medications, he was gonna hear happiest clam. This is almost a couple days afterwards, but he had a few days, he was down, but things have, he's doing well, he's up and above more than. People saw him, Lean said he was looking really well. Jeff, just for the record, our road agent had a accident on his property, he fell from a rafter and hurt himself. And he's in a recovery mode, so he was, last week was all recovery mode, and he's back to work, but I'd say limited duty at this point. Go ahead.
He's told to his son that one person was falling, the medical car accident was hard as all. He says he's still fine, but he said that exact same words the day he fell so.
Exactly.
I guess Coleman and Jackson's, he's doing good.
I think the gentleman's very lucky, and I'm glad he's still fine. So again, so we're gonna wait just a couple, four minutes, but I don't think we can talk this up tonight. It'd be nice, but we're, right, I just wanna make sure. Because I don't want to delay this, the potential that someone not being able to develop this property, or just messing around with the project. Okay, we're anxious.
All right.
In the event there is a lot developed along a Class 6 roadway, there must be at a minimum improvements from the nearest Class 5 or Better Highway up to and including the frontage required in the zoning district in which the parcel for development is located. A turnaround will either be placed at the end of the driveway or at the end of the frontage of said lot, frontage of said lot if developed. Placement and size of any turnaround to be determined by the road agent. Got that last statement? Because driveways may not be the best spot that road agent can determine, I think that's good enough.
I think I just bought it, I think that's a significant improvement.
Yeah, yeah. And it's something we can use and modify depending on a lot that comes around.
Right, and that's why I didn't want to accept it as a policy, but I would like it attached to that policy that you already have for your Class 6 roads.
What I can do then is if you guys approve the language, then this one here has a signature line, I can bring it back before the board next week just to sign it, so that becomes a formal.
Can we give you a verbal page to get it to the contractor so we can give him? So again, minimum standards gonna go, because I don't want to delay that.
Do you have a cell number for November?
I'm doing, no, I got it.
You know, the only thing that kinda bothers me is the driveway part. You know, Jeff could determine that, it's just that we end up going down a road that we bend down.
Should we keep that driveway part right out, you think, Bob?
I would rather keep it out of there.
Just put turnaround to be determined by the road agent, take the driveway portion out, okay?
All right, so.
That way we.
Read us that last sentence.
All right, it's right now, it says, a turnaround will be either placed at the end of the driveway or at the end of the frontage of said lot if developed. I can scratch the whole sentence?
No, a turnaround will be, will be placed along the developed, the improved portion.
Turnaround will be placed.
Along the improved portion.
Along the improved.
With determining, with the exact determination being determined by the road agent.
Well, then the next sentence says, placement and size of any turnaround to be determined by the road agent. I scratched that sentence before.
Yeah, I think I just moved that one up by Jeff, so that way.
Placement. So I scratched that, turnaround will be, will either be at the end of the driveway or the end of the frontage.
No, 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 scratch that. Scratch that.
And just put placement and size of any turnaround to be determined by the road agent. Because there may be ledge or wetlands, or all kinds of other things that would.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Road agent, endorse the Act Book?
No, road agent.
You go as a road agent.
Because he's gonna have to use it in with the highway.
Okay, but you're right, if we put driveway in, then they're gonna say, you said driveway.
Yeah.
So then they're gonna just want to wind up your driveway. So you read that one sentence back then.
Okay, so.
My turnaround will be.
In the event there is a lot developed along the Class 6 road, there must be at a minimum improvements from the nearest Class 5 or Better Highway up to and including the frontage required in the zoning district in which the parcel development is located. Placement and size of the turnaround to be determined by the road agent.
Placement of any, any proposed turnaround, that thought sentence is hanging there.
Right, so it's.
Good.
Placement and size of any turnaround to be determined by the road agent.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
It's simple.
Of the turnaround, not any. Of the turnaround, because it's gotta be a turnaround.
Okay, yep, of the turnaround.
Because it's not just one road, Brian Lord, on Prowlatory Pond Road, the turnaround was right through his yacht, and so when we went down to the fish, and Felicity would get upset, they're turning around on the property, so that takes that out of the.
Of the turnaround, okay, yep, it works.
Okay, good. Well, we have consensus that we can give, we can phone with this to the.
Okay. So I'll tell the croakers that you received a draft, and you guys reviewed it and amended it slightly, and this is what is the file.
And make sure John knows what district they're in, telling them they're in the median district, which is 250. From the starting, they were already talking about either doing 125 or 175 into their property anyway, because that's where the break was.
Right, right.
So 250 is not much further, it's enough to do the turnaround.
Right, and he did, when he came back to get the draft, and I had stayed the draft, he said that there really was a lot to do there, so I think he could probably work with what's there and upgrade it substantially, and not at a big expense for the owner, so I don't know for sure.
Lean, while you're up, remember one, you didn't invite back to you, but I'm gonna open up to you if you have anything special to say.
Not today.
We won't, see?
This week.
I think we're good.
Make a motion to adjourn at 8 o'clock.
Where's all the money?
How second?
3 o'clock.
Where'd you get your account?